Okay, it's six fifteen. We will now open the October regular school board meeting. Uh, one point one roll call. Let the record reflect that all members are present. Uh, one point two recognition of visitors and guests. Uh, thank you everyone that's here and watching. One point three pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, one point four correspondence and recognition. Um, we've had no public participation. I see there's a lot of guests here tonight. Is there anybody that has something to speak about? No? Okay. One point four point two recognition of students, staff, and community. Did we not have any?
I am gonna do that during my superintendent report tonight.
Sure, take it over. Okay, two point oh approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent and main agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lori, second by Matt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, three point oh approval of minutes. That would be from the September school board meeting, the work session meeting, and the last committee meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Ann.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the approval of minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Four point oh consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
It's all moved.
And motion by Ann.
Second.
Seconded by Lori. All those in favor of the items on the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Five point oh main agenda, the monthly financial overview. Carmen?
So, um, you have in front of you the revenue, revenues and expenditure report for the period ending September thirtieth. Um, this compares our current, um, revenues based on the budget that you guys approved, um, last spring, um, for the period starting July first, and then it's comparing it to our last year numbers, which currently are still unaudited because the audit hasn't been finalized. Um, and as you, um, guys remember, this is just budgeted numbers, but our expenditures are actual expenditures. So when we talk about the actual, actual first budget, just keep that in mind that it's, um, it was our initial budget, which we will be revising, um, after the first of the year. Um, so for revenues, if you look at all funds, um, currently, three months into the, our fiscal year, we're at twenty-three point six three percent, um, compared to the twenty-two point three percent, um, the previous year. And for expenditures, we're at sixteen point three four percent compared to the eighteen point three six percent the previous year.
Okay, any other questions for Carmen? Okay, five point two presentation on the district's progress towards English language proficiency by Sue Hagan, E L coordinator.
Perfect, thank you. Hello, um, I'm Sue Hagan. I'm the multilingual learner coordinator for the school district. Can you hear me? Alright. Um, under ESA in Minnesota, progress toward English language proficiency is calculated using a path to proficiency index, um, based on a student's growth on the access two point oh. And, um, just to give you a little background information before I share the data for this year. Um, the ESA is the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was a federal law enacted in twenty fifteen. Um, states were, um, asked to develop their own accountability plan. Um, and part of that is, um, how well your students are progressing towards English language proficiency. And Minnesota chose to use the access assessment, um, which assesses students' ability to communicate information, ideas, and concepts, um, necessary for academic success in the content areas. So that's the assessment Minnesota uses. Um, access stands for assessing comprehension and communication in English state to state. So, as you can see up there on the screen, that, um, those are the four levels, um, of Ling- English language proficiency that the access test uses. Um, it's between one point oh and six point oh. Um, M D E creates a path to proficiency for each student individually, um, based on their students, where their grade level, and then their initial access composite score. So when they're done taking the access, we receive a composite score. Um, students that score at the entering level, typically, Minnesota is giving them seven years to become proficient in English. Um, students that score more at the, you can see the three, four, um, developing, expanding level, are given two to three years to become proficient. Um, so annually, M D E sets a target for each of our students, each of our English language proficient, um, each of our multilingual learners. And, um, that's, that's thirty-seven percent of our student, um, population in our district. Um, and they set that target, um, based on their current year's score. Um, and also with the understanding that progress towards English language proficiency tends to be quick, quicker at the lower grade levels and slower at the higher grade levels. So they take all of that into effect when they set each student's target. And so the data, um, I'm here to share tonight is that, um, oh, to let you know, this data is published then, um, in the North Star Progress, um, Toward English Language Proficiency Report. Um, and it's part of the Minnesota Report Card. And you can see that on average, District five eighteen English learners made it fifty-two point eight percent of the way to their target, which is six point six higher than the state average. Um, District five eighteen has scored above the state average in this area for the last three years. The other piece of data I wanted to share with you is that the, they also create a, um, they also measure how well each student did meeting their, their own target. And thirty-three point five percent of our English learners met or went past their target, which, which is five point six percent higher than the state. Um, our district in this area has scored higher than the state, two out of the three last, two out of the three last years with a slight dip in twenty twenty-four, but we made that up in twenty twenty-five. Um, we had a hundred and students exit our, um, English language instruction education program last year. And currently, we have one thousand two hundred and fifteen students that are multilingual learners and seven hundred and seventy additional students that are former English language learners. Um, and so in our district, all of our teachers are English teachers and teach the English language. Um, I, this is very positive data, and, um, it just reflects the efforts of all of our staff in our school district. Um, do you have any questions? I feel some of the factors, um, that we are above the state average is that, um, we are providing our student, students comprehensible grade level um, content, which is very important. Um, we also provide professional development on using appropriate teaching strategies and teaching methods that are effective. And, um, and I appreciate the administration's support on the support staff we have in our district. They're all components on why I feel like we're above the state in this area.
Questions, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, could you say again that thirty-seven percent of the students are E S L?
Yes.
With the right terminology?
Yep, they're in, they're part of our, um, leap.
What can we do as a board to help? Is there more that we can, how can we continue to help this?
Um, of course, don't make cuts in those supports. You know, with our teachings, with our, um, our E L teachers, with the parent support that we do have, with, um, with, um, the co-teaching that's happening, um, those are all positive. Um, they're making, they're, they're making positive growth for the students.
Well, we won't make cuts if the administrators don't bring them, right? Okay.
Do you, do you, uh, we often talk about goals being set in a lot of the different departments. I mean, do you, is that unfair to do? I mean, do you, you try to find a percentage that you are reaching? We're at, uh, you know, the numbers you shared. Is that something that you try to benchmark yearly?
The individual schools do use, um, this as part of their SIP. Um, I know Prairie Elementary, with it being sixty percent of their student body, um, does use, um, some of this data and, um, and tries to improve each year. Um, and, and then, you know, we encourage the teachers. Um, this is part of our, our da- our data platform that they have access to and elevation. And, um, we do encourage especially our E L teachers to sit down with students, to show them um, their, their composite score, but then their individual scores that they received in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and try to work on where, where they need to put a lot more of their effort in and meeting their target that's the state has set for them.
Sue, how often, excuse me, do the students take the access test?
Once a year. It's like the M C As.
So, just like the M C As. So it's once a year, and there's a window of time that they all take it across the district. Okay.
Yep.
Are the students pulled out during class time working on this?
Um, for testing?
Well, for testing on any P S L.
We have different types of programming depending on the level of need, like, so for your entering and beginning students, they may require an extra tumble time, but most of our like, especially at the K five level, it's, um, push in. Our E L teachers push in, but then sometimes they will get an extra tumble time if they're in the lower levels. Typically, your level threes, fours, and fives don't, um, are not pulled out. And then, um, and then six, twelve, we have a lot of co-teaching happening, um, at the high school especially. They've really worked hard at working towards that. And then that's where, because we are required to give students, um, services until they become proficient, and we have to document that. And, um, so a lot of them, um, receive their, um, English language development support in the co-taught classrooms. Then there is pullout, um, for, again, those students that need the extra yet before they're gonna be successful in the content classrooms, but, um, yeah.
Any other questions?
I think it's just important to note that the, it's a complex puzzle with, with some of our students who are learning English as a second language, knowing that, um, there could also be underlying learning factors, but sometimes also hard to decipher when they don't know the English language first. And so our teachers are working really hard to help acquire the language while also trying to decipher, is there also an underlying need? And, uh, Sue said it, said it great, is, is that students get seven years. It's important to note that we only get funding for seven years, but they remain in that programming until they pass. And so, um, we're, we're trying to navigate all those different factors as students are, are progressing through in the, the learning of the language.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
Welcome.
Okay, five point three presentation on climate weather protocols by Joel.
Give me one second, please. All right, this is information I had shared at both committee meetings last week, but wanted to make sure, uh, the public had an opportunity to hear as well. And we're working together with the communication department to also put together and summarize this in, in kind of a shorter context for staff and families as well. And so, uh, this information here tonight is the decision-making kind of model and protocols that we will use as the weather starts to change. So we have five guiding principles that will go into our decisions. Um, we'll have slides that go a little bit deeper into each of these, but they include consultation with experts, prioritizing staff and student safety, understanding that regular attendance and access to education is really important for our students, allowing the public and our staff to be, uh, to have some predictab- predictability uh, when it comes to decision-making, and then also offering that information in a timely way. When we talk about the experts that we will consult with when making any sort of, uh, school change decisions, uh, the National Weather Service will be our main, uh, focus point for the weather information. We have a close partnership with our transportation team, uh, knowing that those folks will be on the roads um, and be able to give us some real-time information of what's happening. We've got multiple District five eighteen members that will, uh, will be out in the mornings and be out in the afternoons as we navigate the roads and make those decisions. And then also partnerships that have been started between, uh, District five eighteen, Nobles County, and the city of Worthington, knowing that those folks can also help us as well in those decision-making, uh, times. Again, staff and student safety is our priority, um, and making sure that our families understand that. Making sure our families also understand that within reason, um, that if a parent or guardian believes that keeping their children home from school in a, in kind of a questionable, uh, weather situation, um, one of those situations where we're not a hundred percent sure, and we can probably get through the day um, if a, if a family really feels like, um, leaving early or, or coming late is gonna really be the safest choice for their family, um, that we can honor that as long as they, uh, make an absence call to their school. In the event of, uh, of a closure, knowing again that access to education is huge for us, um, an e-learning day or a learn-from-home day could go into effect uh, when a new school day is called in a timely manner. That could include a, a, a day that initially starts as a two-hour late, uh, and then maybe transitions into a learn-from-home day again, if we're, if we're able to do that in a timely way. Students at the elementary level will, will engage from a learn-from-home day with learning packets. Those packets have been sent home, uh, at both Prairie and the intermediate school. Uh, and then our secondary students will engage in classes through the Schoology platform. During those days, students will have access to, uh, support staff from home, um, online as needed. In regards to predictability, uh, temperature is the, the easiest one that we can, we can kind of put out there. And so our threshold moving into the school year will be thirty-five degrees below zero, either, uh, wind chill or, or real temperature, uh, looking at, again, the start of a school day. Uh, for an example, it's got that down there on the bottom. If it's gonna be minus thirty-five until about nine o'clock and then start to rise, uh, it could be pretty much predictable that we would call a two-hour late start and then, and then begin our school day. If that cold temperature is gonna remain throughout the course of the day and longer into the, into the afternoon, it'd be predictable that we would have a learn-from-home, uh, or school closure day. Those other factors are sometimes a little bit harder to predict, knowing that, uh, sometimes weathermen aren't always right. And so, uh, when, when it comes to snow, ice, and wind accumulation, um, we'll, we'll use some of those real-time factors, again, with our, with our partners that are on the road and other team members here at District five eighteen, um, to assess the, the safety of those roads. And again, understanding that, uh, we want to avoid early releases and those late starts and cancellations as much as possible, but we'll still prioritize, uh, safety first. When it comes to timing, um, our goal is to have the decisions made either by nine o'clock the night before, or bor- or by five fifteen the morning of. Um, and so, initial, uh, information will go to staff first, just before five fifteen. That information will go as a text message, as an email, um, right away. And then the rest of the notifications will go throughout the district, um, and to our other, uh, media partners, uh, at five fifteen. We can do many of them instantly, the text message, the email, um, the post on social media. That can happen quite quickly. Uh, we did have to put a window of five fifteen to six, uh, six A M for the, uh, phone call, uh, because we're using a system that has such a large volume of calls, it takes a while to, to sift through them all. So, we want to make sure the public understands that if they get the call a little later than five fifteen, it's because the system is working through all of them. Uh, but we will make the call by five fifteen in the morning, if at all possible. And, uh, that message will go out instantly through those other text forms. We want to just make sure that our, our families have a plan for students in the event of a school closure, knowing that, um, again, we'll do our best to make those calls the night before, if at all possible, so they have more time to plan in the morning. Um, and we also just want to make sure that folks know that in the event of a school closure, whether that's an early release or, uh, a full day, that at the end of the day, our, all of our activities and events that have been scheduled will, um, will be canceled. In a rare case, later in the spring, when it gets closer to, uh, the, the winter sport tournament time, there could be opportunities where sports would still go. Um, an example I can use that I had in the past is, um, it was a really nasty night, really nasty till about noon, and then the sun came out, the wind went down, and the basketball team had to play a game the next day in the section tournament. We could make those rare occasion, uh, and decisions to allow them to practice since they've got that, that kind of one tiny event happening the next day. I apologize to both committees because I accidentally neglected to share this. Uh, and our, our cabinet team put a lot of work into this, and so I want to make sure we share it. But this is a, a kind of a weather-making, um, decision matrix that we had made, um, for all groups. And I know it's super hard to see, and it's more of an internal document, but I did want to publicly just share that we went through every weather scenario you could think of, knowing that in the spring we had that rare situation with some really nasty weather, and kind of for the first time ever, schools started closing and sending students home in May. Um, and so, we went through everything that you could think of and different groups throughout our schools and really have a, a great decision-making model now to say, if we have a severe thunderstorm warning, um, this is what we would do with staff, this is what we would do with students, um, all the way down to, the biggest one we've been dealing with lately, honestly, has been that, that one right there, and, and the air quality that happens, um, in the, in the late spring as it starts to get warm. And what do you do with sports, and what do you do with recess? And so, I just wanted to share that we have a, a really good model, we think, um, to go through if something should pop, where we're not wondering what should we do. We've done that pre-work now, and we've got a document to go to that can really guide our communication and guide our decisions. So, I appreciate the work of our team that helped put that together. And so with that, any questions?
I, I just have, if it is a learn-from-home day, when does that have to be called by? The night before, or still that morning by five fifteen?
So either, uh, the, the statute says we, we have to call it within two hours of the original start time. So we have to make that decision by about six in the morning, really. We don't have a lot of time in the morning to make that adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question. How many, uh, learn-from-home days do we have?
We have five. That has not changed.
What's your, uh, opinion on, uh, handling canceled days? You know, do we have a, a plan for makeup days at the end of the year? Do you prefer to lessen a, a break during the school year?
This would be the first time that I would have to navigate through that. I would really look, uh, most likely we would bring it back to the board. Um, and, and as a board, you really do have the opportunity to help navigate through some of that, um, all the way to the authority of saying, we're not gonna make up that day. Uh, and so, um, I find it hard sometimes on families that have a scheduled break in January or February to then, to then pull that day away, um, as a makeup day. And so I think we should really navigate, um, as best as we can to, uh, to minimize some of that, um, knowing that we want to have our students in the classroom as well.
Are we finding, Eve, from learn, e-learn days are effective, and we should utilize all five of them?
I, I think that, uh, every year, I think we get better at it as a, as a, as a district, um, system. Um, having not been here, uh, I've heard about the, the evolution of the days and the work that goes into them. And I think overall, um, having gone through the pandemic, I think everybody's getting better at it. Um, and we did have a collaboration with, uh, the teacher group, um, to make sure that they felt comfortable with that. Um, this, it would be a new process for, going from a two-hour late to e-learning, um, in the same day. Um, and they feel confident in their, in their conversation with us that they'd be willing to do and able to do that.
Do we have the right phone system that's calling me multiple times and hanging up on me a few times? And, I mean, are we, is that all we have to use? Can we use it better?
To make that, to make the call?
Yeah.
We're, we're currently in the process of, uh, of vetting some different systems, but we're, we're kind of bound with the one we have now.
Okay.
But I can tell you that the, the forty-five minute kind of delay that we're, we're hearing about um, is the same kind of barrier that I was dealing with in my last system as well.
Do we have the right langu- all our languages covered the best we can, do you think?
We do. We have them, uh, pre-recorded and ready to go.
Good.
Yep, we've worked on that.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, five point five, approved to set assigned fund balance as of Jan- June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Discuss the ninety-day superintendent evaluation.
I thought this is the one you were waiting for. All right. Uh, I did put together just a, a brief slideshow just to hi- highlight my own thoughts as we go through this here today. Um, want to reiterate a couple of things. The, the opportunity we had with MSBA in September um, was one that was, uh, empowering to me, um, hearing your support and, and hearing the alignment of kind of my vision with many of your visions, um, was, was great to hear. Uh, I also want to call out the fact that the things I'm going to share, um, are very much a, a hu- the effort of a huge team. Um, and so, the, the folks that, um, collaborate with me on a daily basis at the district office and in our buildings, um, has, has been a, a super enjoyable, uh, transition for me. And so, the things that I'm sharing that we've either done or that we're in the process of doing is very much, uh, the work of a, a very large group. And so, um, I'll quickly just kind of reiterate or, or summarize the goal areas, and then I'll share kind of what goes into each one of these. And so, uh, goal one was around establishing foundational relationships and understanding. And out of our, uh, meeting that we had with Barb Dorn, uh, we had decided that I would focus on engagement and informing the community as a whole. And so, uh, you can read the measurements that are there. Those are the ones we came up with that evening. Um, items that I'd like to call out that we're, we're either doing, uh, or have done, or in the process of doing, uh, are there. And so, since, uh, I started in July, we've started the process of one-on-one conversations with each of the board members. And that's been, um, I, I believe impactful for both, um, being able for me to share important information as it comes throughout the month, but then also getting that personal feedback from you uh, has been instrumental in the, uh, in the work that we've done so far. We've completed get-to-know-you sessions, listening sessions at all of our school sites. We've done one of our student sessions at the middle school. We have the high school session coming up next week. And we have our first community session, uh, happening, uh, this, this Friday. Uh, and so anyone watching at home, we'd love to have you at the district office on Friday morning. Uh, called out each one of those there. And then the last one is really around, um, more around culture and climate. I felt like it, it fit here, though. Uh, our cabinet team, um, has decided, uh, to do a book study around something called the Happiness Advantage. Uh, it's actually a program that I was a part of in my past system, uh, and really changed the culture for us a number of years ago. And so, uh, we're in the process of, of deciphering if that's something we want to bring district-wide. And so we've embarked in a, in a book study, uh, on this topic of, of making positive choices for ourselves and our work. in a book study on this topic of making positive choices for ourselves and our work and having that affect others. And so, really excited to start that. We got our first assignment from Melissa Jensen at our cabinet meeting this morning, and the first sixty pages of the book were assigned to us. So, we've got some work to do in the next couple of weeks. Goal two, around culture, climate, and engagement. Again, in our last meeting, we talked about calling out supporting students, supporting school safety and security, and then the emotional health and social needs of our students. And so, items that have been completed thus far is a staff secure entrance at the high school and putting those processes and protocols in place before students entered in August. It's a goal of ours to create consistent safety protocols and a consistent experience at all of our sites now, so that if I'm a family member or a staff member going to multiple buildings, I have the same expectations and the same experience when I enter each one of those buildings. And that's not currently in place, and so, we're working to align some of that work. Assistant Superintendent Noble has started a group called EPAC, which is an Emergency Preparation Advisory Committee. That group is going to meet monthly and is made up of members from District 518, the city of Worthington, Nobles County, Sanford, I'm trying to think, Minnesota West, any partner that we feel we have a connection with that could really support us in making sure that we have a well-rounded safety perspective for all of our sites, have begun a collaboration. And we had our first meeting just a few weeks ago, and we're meeting again here in the next couple of weeks. And so, the goal of that group is for us to be able to use them as a sounding board as we continue to implement safety practices for all of our sites and get their feedback. The other piece to that is also understanding that there are multiple large entities in this town, and knowing that we have one law enforcement or two law enforcement agencies with the county and the city responding, are we asking them to do something different than they're doing at the hospital or at JBS or some of those other institutions? And so, really collaborating together to align so that our law enforcement officers can respond effectively and quickly. We've also scheduled a safety assessment of all of our sites with the Minnesota School Safety Center, and that is in progress. That is scheduled for later next month, and they will be at all of our sites, again, helping us kind of complete number two, and that is creating that consistent, consistent safety protocol and safety experience at all of our sites. Again, I've already called these out, but they do fall under this area as well, all of the listening sessions. And you can look for a summary of those listening sessions soon that I'll share with all board members once that's done. Number seven is the last one on that list, which is around cell phone use within our secondary schools. I know that our middle school has some protocols and our high school has some protocols, but we're going to get our district leaders together to make sure that it's a clear picture of what does it look like to have a cell phone, use a cell phone all the way from six through twelve, and make sure that it's age appropriate as well as scaffolded and consistent from classroom to classroom. Lastly, goal three, the operational efficiency and resource management. We are still in progress with our special education review. Carol Potter was at all of our schools just a couple of weeks ago, sitting down in small groups with with our staff and asking questions and getting feedback. She had lots of great insights in the two days that she was here. I was able to connect and was so impressed with our schools and our staff and our kids. And so, I look forward to her feedback when she comes to present to board, most likely in January. We've also had some transportation conversations around special education with our transportation partners at four point oh to create more efficient transportation. And along with that is being clear with our case managers and what does specialized transportation look like and sound like and feel like, and how can we streamline some of that to, again, make us more efficient in that area. We've begun a staff to student ratio tracking sheet, and that's been something that's been in conversations through the collaborations with the teacher union to make sure that we are looking at the MOU that is in place with our class sizes and our caseload sizes. And so, we do have that that sheet up and running now, and we plan to share that in the monthly collaborations that have been started with the EMW group and with board members as desired. Later on this evening, you'll hear from Jeff Elstead again with our partnership that we'd like to embark with Site Logic on, again, better utilizing our budget allocations, making sure that we're prioritizing the right projects and taking care of our facilities as needs come up. And then lastly, we are also embarking in a comprehensive needs assessment with the compass team from the Service Co-op. A lot of this is coming out of the North Star Accountability piece with graduation rates at the Learning Center, but they did afford us the opportunity to do a full needs assessment district wide, which I was eager to do as it will help us and inform us, as I'd like to move forward through a full strategic planning project with community and board and teachers and staff as well. So, this is kind of the first step to a long process. I've spoke to many of you on one-on-one conversations, but really have, I have a strong desire to have a picture and a path of where are we now and where do we want to go, and how are we going to get there? And I believe that a strategic plan will help us do that. And to start that off, the needs assessment will, I think will help us get there. And so, although this is a ninety day evaluation or check-in, we're actually about a hundred and ten days in, so you gave me a little extra time, Adam. I appreciate that. But if there's any questions or comments, I'd be open to hear them now.
Nothing? Well, I think you're doing a good job.
I appreciate that.
High five. Okay, can we move on now?
Good.
Five point five, approved to set assigned fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty
The assigned fund balance, this is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We, this is where the boards sets the assigned fund balance for the school year. Is estimated that the unassigned fund balance will be about eighteen point seven million this year. The assigned fund balance is currently at eighteen point five million. This was brought to the operations committee last Tuesday. It was recommended to move three million from the unassigned to the assigned. The assigned projects currently are the ice arena, potentially the softball field, the Prairie Roof beyond LTFM, potential iPad cost. If you did move the three million to the to the assigned fund balance, it is still greater than the three-month general expense average. It is also eight point five million above the ten percent policy minimum. Any questions?
You can see I've projected up on the on the board, kind of the past ten years, the ten-year history. You can see the intentionality of past boards to do two things. Number one, to grow the the unassigned fund, to have at least three months of operation, operational capital, which is essentially where you're at right now, just a little bit over the three months. And the the other intentionality that is seen is the need to have funds set aside for specific projects. And so, it's important to know that the the projects that are being done and being completed with the the assigned funds are funds that have no other funding mechanism. And so, Ryan said it best in his office this afternoon as we were checking in on this, is we're tagging untagged funds, right? When we talk about tagged funds, whether it's community ed or nutritional services or transportation, that money comes from the state, but it can only be spent on those specific items. This is essentially allowing us to do projects that have no other funding mechanism. And so, you can see that column D over the year, excuse me, column C over the years, past boards have been intentional of growing that assigned fund balance to allow for various projects to get done. Past projects, Ryan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, would have been the gymnastics gym, the Learning Center, community ed building, projects such as that, correct?
Yes, and the admin building as well.
So, we did speak to the one that is the most recent need right now, and that is our technology need. Just for board members that were not a part of that conversation, iPads were bought district wide four years ago with money that was was provided during COVID, or they were, it was COVID funding. And so, on a four hundred and seven dollar iPad, we paid about seven dollars an iPad. And so, it was it was an opportunity that wasn't going to come around again, which was a great way to use those funds. The gap came in that there was no budget set aside in the next four years to to replace them. And now, we're getting to end of life on those devices. And so, we're hoping to utilize some of these funds that are a surplus right now for a need that really should have been budgeted for over the past four years. And so, of the, again, if you're looking at column C with the approval tonight of moving the the funds to the assigned fund, really almost ten million of that is already earmarked and spent. It's just hasn't been taken out of the out of the budget yet.
I know that later this evening, we have an agenda item to talk about the Prairie Roof, but it is a line item on there for the assigned projects of seven hundred thousand dollars. And I am wondering if you could just speak a little bit to why that's there versus allocating it for LTFM money?
Yep. The reason it's on there is that we're projected to get about one point five million in LTFM funding, and the cost of the whole next phase of the roof is about two point two, the estimated cost. And so, we've we've put that on there to cover what
Any other comments? We would need a motion to set the assigned fund balance, right?
That is right.
And we want to make a motion to set it?
So moved.
By Ann?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Is there any further discussion?
Also in the recommended action, there's five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for Studio Three.
Want to speak to that?
What's, is that for a month or a year?
Studio Three, they have a fund balance as well. It's also in that, but this is separate, but still in the same fund balance. So, twenty-one five is the assigned fund balance, and there's another five thousand in there for Studio Three's fund balance.
That's the total amount for Studio Three at this point?
What was that?
That's the total amount that'll go to Studio Three at this point from that account.
Five thousand three hundred and twenty will be in the Studio Three's fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of setting the assigned fund balance, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, five point six, approved a second slash final reading of policy four fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, and policy seven oh nine, student transportation safety policy.
We'll break these into two parts here real quick, and I've I've got four fourteen here tonight. Again, just a reminder for the board that if you're looking at the policy, or I can kind of call it out here, under the definitions section is where the major change was, and that is we added a letter B, the definition of an at-risk juvenile. And so, those changes have been made, and I have not heard any further feedback since the the past board meeting. And so, looking for the final approval of four fourteen. If we could do them separate, that'd be great.
Seven oh nine was brought to the operational committee, and it was mainly some clarification on the discipline procedures for transportation and busing. And we also made some clarification on communication between the bus company and the assistant principals. So, we changed a little bit of language there.
We can do them together, one one motion.
Move to approve final reading for policy four fourteen and policy seven zero nine.
Motion by Matt, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Erin, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the approval of policy four fourteen and seven oh nine, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Five point seven, approved to declare surplus property.
We've got two sections of surplus property. They are both in the music band area at the high school. We've got some robes and and some some instruments. We've got a piccolo, I believe, that we're no longer using, and so, looking to declare those as surplus. It was recommended to to approve that through the operation committee.
Day of a motion to declare surplus property.
So moved.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Seconded by Ann, is there any further discussion?
One piccolo.
One piccolo.
Okay.
Do you like to buy it, Matt? All those in favor of declares, to declare surplus property, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, five point eight, approved tax abatement resolution we had earlier tonight.
Yes, we had that earlier. Again, just reiterating again, this is Dan and Tanya Wagner, parcel number three one dash three six five nine dash zero four zero. This is a tax abatement that falls within the Nobles County Home Initiative. It is a two-family duplex out on Sterling Avenue on the west side of town. And again, they have all the necessary documentation here to move forward with that abatement.
I have a motion to approve the tax abatement.
So moved.
Motion by Ann, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric, any further discussion?
Board Chair Bloom, one thing that did come up at operations is there was a question around how many homes have been impacted through this opportunity. And so, I did get an opportunity to reach out to Bruce Heikamp at the county. He wasn't able to share exact numbers, but he did say at least a hundred and fifty total homes in the county have been able to partake in this program, and at least seventy-five percent of those have fallen within District 518. So, and it's been going on long enough now that homes have now kind of aged out of the abatement and are now back into paying paying the tax. So, but it's been a good initiative to increase housing in the area.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Ms. Hargard.
Aye.
Ms. Schutte.
Aye.
Ms. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Mr. Wedboom.
Aye.
Motion passes. Five point nine, actually, I'm just going to put five point nine and five ten together beans are both out of state requests.
We have two of them tonight. We have a group of music folks that are looking to attend the Midwest Clinic International Band and Orchestra Conference. That is in Chicago, fairly prestigious and well-known conference, and it's nice and somewhat close this year. Then we have another staff member at the middle school who actually had a grant pay for most of this trip. We're covering the substitute partial of this, proportion of this. And so, that one is for a financial literacy conference as we continue to build out that curriculum with our middle school students. And so, looking for approval for both of those groups to attend those out-of-state conferences.
We have a motion to approve out-of-state travel request for five point nine and five point ten.
So moved.
Motion by Eric, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ann, any further discussion? All those in favor of the out-of-state travel requests, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion passes. Five eleven, approve the agreement with Site Logic.
Jeff, I'll have you join us. We welcome back Jeff Elstead again. Jeff's paving the way back and forth to Worthington. Now, in the last couple of weeks, we appreciate his willingness to be here to in person to answer questions that we have. But we are looking for board action this evening to enter into a formal partnership with Site Logic, as again, we continue to assess our facility needs, our facility futures, and and really look for their vision around, you know, how we could best utilize the funding sources that we have to continue to make this such a great sources that we have to continue to make this such a great place to be and great facilities for our kids. As you maybe think about any questions you may have before we move forward, I do want to let you know that I did and was able to connect with a handful of folks that Jeff had provided for me, and so I'd like to just summarize some of those conversations now. All three individuals that I was able to talk to said very similar things around projects coming in on time and on budget, finding funding mechanisms that really do align with the type of project they're doing, ones that two of the individuals had spoke to were on HVAC projects, had nothing but great things to say. One individual said they don't regret the partnership at all, recommend 10 out of 10, and couldn't believe that the site assessment was actually free even when they didn't do a project for a year. And so they came and did a lot of work, and again, taking a lot of risk with schools to do that level of upfront work, knowing that not a dollar of work can come out of it for a while. This district that I had spoken to was operating in SOD and needed some time and some greater planning to get things done before they could start, but they needed the assessment to really give some vision. And so those were all great sediments. And again, I had no caution from anyone in moving forward with a partnership with Jeff or his institution. Any questions for Jeff? He's here in case we have more to discuss.
Can you just remind me, Jeff, about the timeline to come in and do that evaluation? So that...
Interesting you should ask. So we're actually standing by right now. Our facility analysts will have boots on the ground on Thursday morning here, and they will be meeting first to kind of go through a number of different things, including like, how do we get access to buildings, things like that? We anticipate that particularly our team of facility analysts will probably be on campus or in the community working with schools for probably about a week to thoroughly assess all of your buildings, including your most recent build, just because we also catalog all of those assets to go into MySiteIQ that will be with you forever, so that you can help to monitor the condition of your buildings moving forward. So again, we're kicking off on Thursday, provided your approval this evening, and then we'll be probably getting most of our assessments completed, particularly with the building that the district, building, excuse me, that the district administration sees as the greatest need upfront. We would actually like to start moving some things forward because we're trying to help you avoid tariffs. And so if there's equipment and things that need to be ordered, we want to identify that early, so that if there were things that we can get those things ordered to avoid any additional costs to the district and try to find those ways to maximize the funding.
So your report back to us, when are you anticipating that?
I would anticipate that we'll have a first report for you probably by your December board meeting.
Okay.
And that will be an initial report based upon what we've fully assessed up to that point, and then we'll keep building into that assessment later on through the late winter.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't remember from our conversation last week.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
It's a chairman question for Joel and for Jeff, probably. So this facility, our glaring need is in our cafeteria serving area. As you're doing the analysis of this building, is there emphasis put on that now, or does that happen as we continue on in the process?
That's really left to administration and the board, so we will identify based upon the conversations we have about where to start, and I anticipate on Thursday, that's what the crux of our conversation will be. If cafeteria space and utilization of that space happens to be a priority, then the first thing we want to do is start to provide some ideas and solutions for you. So when we come back in December, there's a fair chance that we would be offering already, here's what we've noticed, here's what we're hearing from administrative staff, here's what we're hearing from your high school staff, if that happens to be the building, and students, by the way, so that we can gather up their perspectives, so we can start to better understand what scope of work might be done here.
Do you suggest that, and we also have space need concerns here, that was part of our referendum attempt in the past, does that happen at the same time, or is this going to be a prioritized approach?
Part of the assessment will also include a facility usage audit, so getting a real good picture as to how are we using our teaching spaces throughout the course of a day? And through that audit, we'll be able to say, yeah, we're a classroom short, or no, we could do some different things with our master schedule, or move some things around to better utilize our spaces to, you know, to minimize the need to build on, for example.
I hope the staff and students don't get sick of us, because we're going to ask them a lot of questions, because we want to make sure that their instructional spaces are the right fit for them, but also from a student perspective, what are they looking for if there was potential expansion, things like that? So we really try to dig deep and gather those perspectives to serve every audience that you have here, so.
What was the percent you charge towards a project once we...
If there's a project identified by the board that is 18.75%, is our fees, yeah. And that's, again, as I shared with the committee last week, excuse me, I'm sorry, as we identified with the committee last week, industry standard, we collect information every year in the Freedom of Information Act with our competitors, and every project typically lands somewhere between 19 and 22%. SiteLogic's approach is, we're going to tell you exactly what your cost is upfront, because we don't add change orders, because that's included. If we didn't get it right, that's our fault, and we're paying for it. So again, we try to do all of our upfront with you and be very transparent. Communities expect transparency, and that's how we operate as a business as well, so 18.75% will be final.
I do want to just share one more thing that I should have said in the reference part of this, is that one of the individuals I spoke to spoke specifically to the support that they were given in regard to closing a building, and then communicating that with community on the putting $15 million into a building from the 40s versus spending 25 on something new, and navigating from start to finish, and that community process that Jeff had spoke to at our work session two weeks ago very much came through in that conversation with a smaller district here in the state. So just wanted to call that out as well.
And you redo the assessment every five years, right?
Yeah, at minimum. We would probably want to get in here every three years, depending upon if there's been bigger changes or things that are happening in the district, we want to make sure that we're updating MySiteIQ as often as possible.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agreement with SiteLogic.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ann, seconded by Matt, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the agreement with SiteLogic, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
512, approve Form A resolution of governing board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation.
That's a long way of saying we're looking for your support and approval tonight for a grant opportunity that supports our free and reduced lunch students that play and participate in activities through the Minnesota State High School League. This was presented by Activities Director Josh Dale at Operations last week and was recommended for approval tonight.
I move approval.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Seconded by Eric, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, there was a question at the committee regarding where the dollars go towards, what fund? Do we, were we able to specify where we put the grant dollars?
I'm going to look to Ryan, do you know where the funds for that? His athletic fund?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Activities.
Activities fund, sorry, Activities fund.
This is a roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Ms. Agard.
Aye.
Ms. Shute.
Aye.
Ms. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom.
Aye.
Motion passes. 5.13, approved request bids for Phase 2 and 3 of the Prairie Elementary Roof Replacement Project.
We're seeking board approval to go out for bids to finish the prairie roof. We took time at about this time last year, and the board made the decision, there was three phases initially, but then when you guys went with alternative 1 and 2, it actually made that project into two phases. So when you, when some of you saw it initially, it was three full phases, but we added a project or added to the project. So we completed $1.6 million worth of work, and now we're hoping to get in front of, boards now have the authority to levy for roofs, and it starts in July 1. So there's some concern that there may not be contractors available to do all the roofs across the state now that boards have that levy approval, so we're trying to keep this moving and hopefully get them on-site right away after school. If we approve this, we will look to shift summer school out of prairie again, and at least for one more summer, so we can have that roof completed. The estimate is $2.2 million.
Do I have a motion to request bids for Phase 2 and 3?
So moved.
Motion by Ann, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Darla, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we did discuss this a bit, and I'm, we are, just approved an agreement with SiteLogic to help us with this. And I know we talked about we're better to finish this ourselves and then engage with them moving forward. You're putting Mr. Noble, he's wearing 83 hats, and I don't, are we doing the right thing by continuing in-house and not using the company that we just signed an agreement with?
So Garland is the company that will do the bidding on this project, and actually we spoke to Jeff specifically about some of the roofs, and SiteLogic often will use Garland at times as well when they're doing this type of roof. So if we would have already been in agreement with SiteLogic, they likely would have reached out to Garland to do some of this bidding as well. So that was one reason that we decided to just finish this one up and move forward with SiteLogic after the prairie roof is done.
I have a question. So initially, we didn't have a bid for the 2 and 3 part of the phase, we just had a bid for the first part.
Right, we had estimates, but we did some double checking that we do have to go out for bids to finish the entire roof. We had initial estimates.
The first part that's finished now, would it be the same type of roof?
Correct.
Because I remember the first bid was going to be higher, because it was going to be a roof that's going to last longer.
It's actually a little bit, it's more square footage.
Okay, right, but it'll be the same product?
Correct.
Okay, with more longevity than something else?
Yes.
I think it was like five years difference, and it was more expensive for the...
It's a 30-year.
Okay, 30-year, okay, so that would be all similar. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor to approve Phase 2 and 3 of the Prairie Elementary Roof Replacements, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. 6.0 reports, superintendent's report.
All right, this evening I get the pleasure of just recognizing some great achievements thus far through the fall, and so I'm going to go through the list that I appreciate Ms. Foley helping me with here this month. Homecoming was just kind of wrapping up at our last board meeting, but we had lots and lots of fun activities, many exciting events, and really showcased school spirit throughout the system, and so just a really great week, and just wanted to call that out again. We wanted to give a shout out to our middle school students who have received the Good News of the Day phone calls and Trojan Pride Awards. If you're a member on Facebook, hopefully you've gotten to see some of those as well. We want to make sure those students keep up their hard work. As I've already stated through my evaluation piece, that we've had listening sessions at all of our schools and with our middle school students. We found that our middle school students talk a lot when you show up with pizza and the opportunity for kind of an open forum, so that was a lot of fun the other week. We want to give a shout out to our Trojan Boys soccer team for their great season. They were runner-up in the Big South Conference, as well as runner-up in the section tournament, a really exciting second-round game where we were down 3-0 and came all the way back and then just fell a little bit short, but we look forward to continued success in the future. We want to give a shout out and congratulations to the high school FFA dairy team, earning second place in our region and advancing to the state FFA events. Special recognition to Paula Dykstra for earning first place overall in that competition, and best of luck there. Another shout out to the FFA general livestock varsity team, strong performance, they took fourth place overall at SDSU and advanced to the state FFA events. Noah Gravenhoff earned a title of overall champion in that competition. Lastly, a huge shout out to the FFA Ag Communications Team. I got to hear them speak this afternoon at Noon Kuanis. They shared their experiences and where they're headed off to the National FFA Convention after taking first place at the state meet, and so we look forward to hearing about their experiences in Indianapolis. And then the last one I have here is, we had some great results from our Trojan runners in cross-country at the Big South cross-country meet. Congratulations to Austin Kinzer, he took 10th place and was all-conference. Azra Abanay was 17th place, an honorable mention, and Madison Sieve with 15th place, and also had a personal record in the conference meet, and also earned honorable mention. Lastly, for my update is for the board, in that just a reminder that the MSBA Leadership Conference is happening in January, and so if you would like to attend with myself and any other members, please let Ms. Ernsdorf know, and she'd be happy to register us as we continue to grow in our leadership. That's my report for October.
Mr. Chairman, a question if I may of Mr. Hycamp.
Yes, sir.
I think hearing of all the great successes of our students jogged my mind of, we've talked a lot in the past year about engaging students from our high school to be part of our board.
Yes, sir.
And there was a little bit of some effort put into that last year. I don't think we, I know that we didn't have anyone representing, but I would encourage our building leadership here and you to continue moving forward with that. I think that would be a nice addition to our board.
Yes, sir.
Okay, 6.2, Instructional Committee.
Everything's been covered.
Okay, 6.3, Operations.
I believe it was covered in great detail, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome.
You're welcome.
6.4, Other Reports. 7.0, Other Business. So I got a question on other business, and I talked to Joel a little bit about this. We haven't heard much, what's going on with the watershed and the intermediate school land out there?
Yeah, I can share what I've done so far. I had a meeting with some watershed leadership about a month ago, and they brought me up to speed with the work that they've done out there with the grant that they've been, that they've had now or procured for the last year, the proposals that have been made through the DNR. The last three proposals, much like it was written in the paper a few weeks ago, have all been denied. And so we have a new watershed director as of at least this week, I believe, I saw in the paper. And so I did share with Mr. Livdahl through email that there's been kind of some other ideas that have been tossed around, how to maybe utilize that space, knowing that the watershed really is looking to measure the amount of nutrients that are being captured before they get to the lake to support that project, but also understanding that none of the plans that have been proposed have been accepted, and so trying to find a happy medium there. And so I look forward to continued partnership. Tom Alberg will now be the, taking over kind of the leadership portion of that board, and then we've got the new director to work with as well. And so we'll continue to move forward and utilize that space out there. I think that, you know, there are lots of different ideas that are out there, ideas that I've even had, knowing that we want to continue with the ag part of that land, but is 200 acres of farmland manageable for a school district? And how do we continue, you know, with the donation of time and effort and equipment to navigate what that looks like and what other curricular opportunities could exist outside of just ag land in the sciences and in the environmental sciences and such? And so we're exploring all those different avenues, and we'll continue to partner with the watershed to, you know, support the project with making sure clean water gets to the lake and town, and then also utilizing that land for multiple different educational opportunities for kids.
I just know one thing that was talked about, you know, in the past quite a bit, was if we can find a way to do something with them, whether it's a cost-share project or something like that, is that going to be an area suitable and big enough to look at doing something for cross-country?
We'd have to, you know, figure out what we want, what do we want it to be? We'd have to, you know, figure out what we want, what do we want it to be? And I think anything is possible. Our, our kids were just talking about, I believe the, the Big South Conference Meet was, wasn't it in Laverne, like around their ball fields, right? And they're doing loops, and I, I think there are lots of opportunities. That's a, that's a quarter section. There's a lot of space out there. And so depending on what that looks like and how we can develop it, I think there are lots of opportunities.
Okay, 8.0, future business? Nothing or adjourned?